We are live.
Good morning, welcome to the February seventeenth meeting of the Kentucky High School Athletic Association. First item of business is a statement from general counsel regarding open meetings law and Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. Pursuant to open meetings law and due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held via teleconference, it's being broadcast over the internet as it is not feasible to offer a primary physical location for the meeting which the general public could attend. I want to remind everybody that's viewing the meeting that it's available to the general public through the association's YouTube channel located at youtube.com/khsaatv. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. At this point in time, we'll turn the work session over to President-elect Marlon Miller.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us. First item on agenda for today is we need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion, Marlon.
All right, Pete makes a motion. Anybody second it?
Ken Parker Brown, second.
All in favor of going into closed session, raise your hand. All right, we're now in the closed.
Okay, we're live.
All right, welcome back. Thanks for your patience as we're in closed session. Resuming the work session, we'll go to item three, which is championship review. Item 3.1, discussion of football championships.
At the last meeting, a couple of board members approached me about getting the issue of the first two rounds of football playoffs on the agenda. We contacted, I contacted the Football Coaches Association. They've conducted a survey that you have results of. Reminder, this is a survey of coaches, not administrators, but was coaches, and there is overwhelming support for revising the first two rounds to go back to playing outside of district play, outside of their district for the first two rounds and then leave the third and fourth round, fifth round as they are. This decision would have virtually no impact going forward on the office. It obviously has an impact on the membership. You've seen the survey results, and I think we've given you in your rationale for the item, there's a couple of different alternatives. We, number one, you could honor the request and direct a survey to be done of the principals and designated representatives, and my suggestion is to also survey school superintendents. Unfortunately, when you get into travel costs for anything other than a local game, it's more of an administrative issue, and I respect our coaches and they're passionate about the work they do. But at the same time, there's issues that we need to make sure the entire membership feels strong about. So one option would be to conduct that survey. We get you the results in May, and you all make a determination. The other would be to not do a survey at this point and simply do a survey as part of our 2023 reclassification or realignment. It's really in the board's hands, and I know that a couple of you have contacted, I really kind of turned the discussion over to Mr. Miller and the board members, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that might come up.
All right, at this time, we'll open it up for any questions or discussion on football championships.
I know we've had a lot of discussion about this on multiple occasions, and I guess my biggest concern is that we're treating, this would treat football differently than we do any other sport that has postseason play in district and regional competition. We would not consider this in basketball, in baseball, in softball, or in volleyball. It wouldn't even be a consideration to think that we would play cross-district in regional competition. And I just don't understand when we made the decision before, we said we were gonna do it until we did the realignment, and I think we need to hold to that. And also think that, again, I think it does create better rivalries because you're playing teams that are closer to you in those first round and second round playoff games. So I guess I'm just, I'm struggling to understand why we want to treat football differently.
I understand where Scott's coming from, and I think when we made the decision a couple of years ago to go the way we did, for me at least, it was the lack of data support from the coaches and what they wanted. I too, you know, I struggle with understanding what's wrong with playing in district, but with seventy-seven percent of your coaches feeling that strong, you know, if the principals and superintendents support that as well, you know, I feel like we, you know, and once again, it's my opinion that we're here to represent them, and if that's what they would like, and that's what they want. However, maybe it doesn't make as much sense to us or me. I think I could support it with that many folks being in favor of it.
I agree with Kirby. I think that we need to really look at, I think we need to listen to our superintendents, you know, and Scott's one of those. And I think we need to listen to our coaches, and because they're out there doing it every day, so that they do understand somewhat, you know, the reasoning. I don't know reasoning for or against strongly, but I do believe that we ought to, we ought to, we ought to survey, you know, our coaches, well, coaches have already been surveyed, but at least survey our superintendents and our principals in these buildings and see what they say, and then I think we ought to make a decision. We should wait to 2023 to do that either.
I think we need a decision from individuals. I mean, be it one survey going to the superintendents or principal, and then one, you know, and then one from one coach per school. You know, I think if we look at that survey, and I looked at survey in pretty great detail, there's several responses from more than one school. So the seventy-seven percent is not a legitimate percentage. So I would be more inclined to say, let's get a survey from our superintendents or principal, whichever that may be, one vote per football school, and then get a true survey from one coach per football school, and then compare that data, and if there's significant enough data to warrant going forward, then we can maybe reconsider it. But I'm kind of like Scott, you know, if we start reconsidering every time a coach wants to do something, we could be in, man, we could spend half our meetings just realigning stuff we did the month before. You know, so we need to be very cautious of that and making sure that the information we're getting is legitimate, and we're getting not just our coaches, which we value dramatically, but also get a survey that talks about the guys that are going to fund it, the superintendents and the principals that are responsible for funding that travel.
I agree that it would be a good idea to reach out and let our constituents at our schools let us know what they're thinking. Obviously, our coaches do a good job. They got a good grasp, but they're coming at just a little bit different angle. But I do think a survey with our schools would be very beneficial and see if that same kind of support comes across and give us an opportunity to look at that data.
I like the idea also of survey. I understand what Scott's saying there, but I think, you know, football is something that we've been tweaking on for the last, you know, five, six, eight years. You know, I think we're getting to the point where, you know, with the RPI, more people are on board with that. They're starting to agree with that. We're seeing the fruits of that in the state championship games with better ball games. You know, and so we're massaging, I think, the football playoffs a little bit more than basketball and the other sports, you know, those aren't really left to change too much. Those have been in place for years and years and years. And, you know, football, I think this allows an opportunity to see if we can keep improving it to get it to where, you know, the other sports are when it comes to championships and things of that nature. You know, just talking with the people with the superintendents or the principals, I think is a good idea to just to see, you know, when this was changed a few years ago, I'll be honest with you, that was news to us. You know, all of a sudden, we just get something from, you know, the association, hey, we're changing the playoffs back, and, you know, we were, we were didn't understand why or where it came from. All of a sudden, there it was, and, you know, we dealt with it and moved on. Of course, you know, being more involved here on this side of it now, it obviously makes a difference, but I think it would have been hurt to reach out and talk to superintendents or the principals, athletic directors. However, we want to do it, like Darryl was saying, you know, one voice, but and see what the numbers truly are.
That would also give the superintendents and athletic directors and football coaches a chance to talk to each other and share the different perspectives that each of them are coming from. Also.
I just know we had significant discussion on this, and there was some travel concerns, a great deal. I mean, I can speak from my school standpoint. We were traveling a hundred miles to get beat seventy points. And a lot of four seeds were doing that all over the state. And to me, if you're gonna do it in football, let's do it in every other sport then. Let's not play in district when we get into postseason. Because I don't, again, I don't know why you would treat one sport differently than we do every other sport when it comes to postseason competition. And I just, I know we had a great deal of debate. I mean, I think it's been in place two years. I don't understand why we would want to do it before we get to the realignment in 23. That's only two more years. I think you've got four years of data. We had some really good football games this year as it went throughout the entire postseason. And I think you need a little bit more than a couple of years to really see how things are going to go, because it, again, if we're gonna look at it every time somebody, you know, brings up a question, then, you know, we'll be doing this, you know, every, every year, it seems.
I agree with Lucy. I think we need to have all stakeholders involved in the decision. You know, what do the superintendents think? What do the coaches think? I received a breakdown from the Kentucky Football Coaches Association, how they voted, the survey they put out. You know, that's one set of data, and like Scott is saying, you know, every time somebody brings it up, we're coming back to the table and discussing that, you know, we need to make a decision based on, again, all of our stakeholders and hold to that.
Any other discussion? So what I'm hearing is that the most sentiment is that we do a survey and we send it out to our superintendents, principals, and possibly coaches, and then look at the data and see where do we go from there. JT, Julian, I'm asking, how long, when could we do the survey and when could we get it back?
I mean, it could be done over the course of three or four weeks, and you can do it for the May meeting, and there's no final decision. Even if you were going to change, you don't really need to make a final decision till July. I mean, before the season starts, but I think the thought would be to try to have this in place by May to where you could focus on other sports. We do have, you know, nineteen or twenty championships. Don't want to spend every meeting talking about the same one. The question for us has really been, as this discussion is going on, is are you looking at now or two years from now? I think that at some point, there's going to be a gathering of data from our schools. We can fine tune. I still take you back to when we talked about the playoff format. We've now been in close to twenty years. We changed some first round bracketing, but we went to the different format where we brought four teams and we expanded classes, all of that coming out of the mid-two thousands. And when we did that, we took a survey of the superintendents, principals, athletic directors, and coaches. And I think those board members that were on the board then will tell you, no two groups agreed. Yeah, superintendents felt one way, principals felt one way, the coaches felt one way. I think if, whenever you do the survey, I strongly suggest that it is one vote per member school, and it's up to them to decide who gets to cast it and who gets to break the tie. I mean, if we got superintendent, principal, and coach that don't agree, you know, there's a pretty good chance the superintendent's votes don't count. But that should be their decision versus us getting pitted in the middle of a debate between, well, the superintendent's wanted this, but the principal's wanted that. I would encourage you to look at some, you know, just one vote per member that plays football. But the timing of when you do it is what the board really needs to decide. Do you do it now? Or do you do it as part of the 23 realignment process that you said that we're gonna do a year ago? Because I'll tell you one thing, let's face it, if you wait, some of those personnel will change and opinions will change. That's what we've seen through this. That's why, as Mr. Colderan says, we talk about football just about every year, personnel change, same teams getting beat change, other things happen, and then you bring about new discussion. So it's just, you all need to decide really whether it's a current issue that could affect the 21 playoffs or an issue for realignment 23, in my opinion, because I mean, either way, you're going to be asking your membership for feedback.
Did we not do a survey like that prior to that realignment?
We did some survey on it, Trent, but the decision to play in district really was initiated within the boardroom, and then you all went back and talked to constituent groups and came back and confirmed that. And it was travel related. We had teams traveling a pretty good portion of the state to play a first round game. And there was a lot of data gathered, maybe not as structured and formal this last time, but we've taken survey after survey on football.
So we need a vote to do a survey at the next meeting? So do we need to move this to?
Yeah, it would need to move to the full session, and then you all would just need to decide if, are you doing it now for 21? Are you doing it now for 23? And are you doing it just in the future for 23? Really kind of decide, are you really, is the majority of the board interested in considering changing it for 21? Is a decision point for you?
So is that two votes, one, are we consider it for the upcoming year, and then two, about the survey?
I think personally, Marlon, the survey's either way, because it's just timing of it is going to be, is going to be what you all have to decide. Do you want to consider the issue at your May meeting for the 21 playoffs?
There's going to be some information coming out about spring football or some questions asked about spring football. Would that be appropriate time to, if we wanted to do the survey?
You could. One of the things that even our coaches association, that I can't applaud them enough for their great communication, and Dave Buchanan and his people have been great communicators and leaders this year. But one of the things you're also facing is we're in transition right now among coaches. There are schools with coaches leaving and coaches coming in. We'll communicate the spring football stuff. We've already asked them for their dates, but, and we haven't had a lot of submission, quite frankly, but we know the school calendars are a bit in flux right now. But there's several, about any time, we could put out that kind of survey. Especially, rest to be honest, the March time period, because a lot of our championships have been pushed back, would be really good for us to take care of some administrative things like that.
So what I'm hearing is that we probably just need to move this to the full board meeting and then decide if we want to change it for this upcoming year, or do we want to look at it from two years from now? And, you know, a couple of coaches did reach out to me, and I know when we first talked about it a couple of years ago, when we made the change, it was strictly, most of it was concerning travel, you know, the distances in the first round, you know, those coaches, I mean, I think we, in my opinion, I think we need to kind of listen to what the coaches just did a survey, put out a survey of our own, compile the data, and then see where it leads us. If it leads us to continue what we're doing, then I think we stay status quo. If it tells us we need to look at changing it, then I think we might owe it to the coaches.
I agree with Marlon. I think that, you know, there's other ways to do that. I mean, you know, of course, in the survey, you saw them say something about, so like sister districts that could have cut down on your travel. I mean, we do sectionals in soccer. We don't do sectionals in basketball. We don't do sectionals in other things. I think we ought to take a look, listen to them in the survey, take a look at it for 21. I think we need to at least give them that. Because not every sport is exactly the same, and we've kind of demonstrated that, how we get to the end time. So I really do think we ought to at least listen to them, and if there's not enough, then we do it in 23, but there's a bunch, then we do it in 21, or at least talk about it and vote on it. So that's just me.
Go ahead, Greg.
Go ahead, Marlon.
The only thing is, the first two rounds are exact, right now, they're exactly the same in every sport. It's what you do beyond the first two rounds. And that can change from one sport to another, but I do believe there is, there is, there's good consistency when you begin postseason play in all your sports in a consistent manner, and that's the way it's set up right now.
One of the things that you'll want to do, whether you do it quickly in between meetings or if you, and most of you have already done it, we put up there on the survey results document for you all, you've got a summary by district. You will notice that geography does play into this quite a bit. When I look on page two of that document and I look at the districts that are District One, which traditionally are the ones in the West, seem to have a totally different feeling than some of the ones in the central part of the state. That's why we have board members from every possible region. You've got to look at all the different angles. And so, you know, and if you really get down into it, those of you that really get into the weeds and football can look at the competitive nature of some districts and see there's probably a lot of reason why they might not want to play in district, and the competitive nature of the district next door. You have to analyze that. That's your role. That's why we have regional representatives and different group representatives. Whether you do a survey or not now, you definitely want to take a hard look at, and this is just the coach's perspective, but definitely a hard look at that.
I think we need to go ahead and move this forward and then see about a survey. One of the biggest things that I think we've had the problem with, if we talk about it and hearing across our conversations, that our coaches, athletic directors, principals, superintendent, all have to have that conversation. Otherwise, this is all meaningless. Julian said before that we've gotten different variations of responses from those different groups. We've got to do a better job at our schools of communicating with our football coaches and all involved, all the way up to the superintendent. And ultimately, that superintendent's the one that's going to represent that district. And that communication has got to start if we're going to do this.
Well, Greg, to that end, I would tell you that I think that with the revised structure of the coaches association and the excellent communication pattern they've gotten into, I think you're going to see a much more concerted effort by them to initiate that local school conversation and make sure that people are on the same page. I think they've done a really good job of restructuring themselves the last year and a half, and I think you'll see that.
So do we need a motion to move this to for a board meeting?
You have, in the past, you've done it a couple of different ways, but without objection, you've been moving things to the full board meeting and not having to take a full motion and a vote, et cetera. Chad, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's been the past practice, is that we just moved this item forward, and it's in the full board session later on today.
Okay, so guess we'll move item 3.1 to the full board meeting for discussion. All right, next item. 3.2, season championship winner bowling.
Let me, I'm going to try to share the screen. This is a document that you all have just in summary. And you should be able to see it now.
Yes.
Can we see it, Rob? You good?
Yep.
Want to start, and staff wants to walk you through, let me move the Zoom control here. Staff wants to walk you through the various sports and just where we are. You asked us in the January meeting to dig in, and I know these folks have spent just about 24/7 with managers and local people trying to get information. Ms. Bradenbaugh, while you're talking, I'm going to figure out to project this as a slideshow in Google Slides, but if you want to start with the bowling update, please.
Sure. I just wanted to cover that we have done the eight region sites. We have determined those. We're still working with those managers on restrictions, obviously with special emphasis on attendance. Keep in mind, there is still that existing order in place for bowling facility, and as the commissioner mentioned, those don't, aren't specific to our events, but we're not going to put facilities in any problematic situations. So we're going to work with the managers. We know that some areas are going to have significant attendance restrictions at the local level, and we're going to refer that to the local level of what they have going on in their area. There are some alterations being made as far as formats to ensure appropriate distance, and we also have reduced the team size from 12 to eight for the postseason on the roster, so that that's less people in the building at one time. So if you could go to the next slide, I have a few more. Right now, we tentatively have the state scheduled for three days instead of two. We have made some changes to the schedule. We're looking right now to go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We are going to do the singles and team event for the same gender in the same day. We split the singles tournament. Typically, the boys and girls singles are in the building at the same time. We have split those so that, again, there's just less bodies, and then we've also allowed for some cleaning and ingress and egress issues as well. And then we'll come back on Wednesday for the unified and adaptive competition on the third day. We have made very minor changes to try to make this as usual as possible, and we'll follow those attendance restrictions on the state guidelines, but overall, our planning is going well. We're going to meet with region managers later this week and assist them in any questions that they have in planning their event.
Mr. Miller, in the regular meeting, we would ask for a motion to accept that report, and we would move to the next report, so. If that works for you.
Do we have a motion to accept that report?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of moving that to the full board meeting? All right, anyone oppose? All right, we'll move that bowling report to the full board meeting. Thanks, sir. All right, next item, 3.2, I mean, 3.3, winter swimming championship.
I'm kind of glad we had bowling go first, because obviously, a major roadblock we have hit, as our schools have hit, is swimming. Swimming facilities are extremely restricted right now, and Mr. Cope has got some data, and I think he's still able to be on with us, but if not yet, if not, Ms. Bradenbaugh and I can try to walk you through it if he has more connectivity issues, but Butch, if you want to start out with this.
Yeah, and I apologize. I've been bouncing off and on since about 8:30 this morning. I think I'm at the top of the telephone pole on Green Acres, but I'm back live at least, but we have we have been talking. We sent out a request for comments back from the schools to the head coaches on what the postseason would look like. You know, we continue to have the lack of opportunities for the kids to even be in the pool. I talked to a coach last week. They had their first swim meet that was scheduled, their first one for last week, and it was canceled. The limited capacities, where we have the amounts that are permitted on deck. And then you see there on the slide with regard to our entries, in 2020, schools could interrupt four entries per event, and there's 12 events per gender, including diving, and relays up to eight names, of which four would swim, and then the top two from each of those regions advance along with the at-large for a total of forty people per event. So we're bringing about approximately 300, 325, give or take, of participants into our state round each year. So Commissioner, if you could flip to the next one. We have been working with some regional sites, and we've got nine regional sites, and eight of those, of which currently, if they are having any meets, some are private clubs, some are school sites, some are third-party university sites, or a couple, but they're not allowing any fans in at this time just because of the limited capacity. But they're not allowing any, uh, any fans in at this time just because of the limited capacity. So they're using that space. To allow for the kids to be in and, and have an opportunity to swim. And the one current regional site is only letting in, I believe it's 65 spectators, um, on that. So there would be some challenges. Um, we are working with, um, those managers about the potential of the, the ability to have that live stream. Um, so we would have some capability for the parents to see that. Strangely, um, it, it, some of the responses that we got back, they were automatically looking at wanting to cut. Things, cut the number of entries a school could go into, even cut the number of people that would advance on, which. Contradicts the, the very, the main bullet point that you all charged staff with, um, to not have a reduction on that. Um, I think in talking to most people in other states that are in the same boat and Indiana just executed their state. Uh, swim meet this last week and they are, people are going to time finals. What time finals is, there's no prelims. And then you just swim and you score it. Um, and then the board obviously looking at that, the, the previously announced dates that you announced in December were April the 5th and the 12th for a read in postseason.
But if I can interject one thing on time finals, for those of you that are more familiar with track than swimming. Uh, when we expanded the number of track entries in all events, we went to time finals, choosing more entries over prelim. And this will, this will be the same type of thing that other people are having. So.
Diving, um, we've always had some, some challenges with that and, and mostly due to participation. Um, last year we combined regions to where you could see regions one, two, and three. Um, four, five, seven were combined together because, um, in some regions there's a lack of participation. Um, it would continue to be a, a separate entity with those, those points rolling over and we would schedule those. Uh, potentially using this same format. And then last year we did try to have all of the judges at each of the regionals. It was very challenging and it didn't work real well. Um, we ran a five panel and we were able to get three of those judges to be at three different sites on three consecutive nights. Um, on that, and then they worked state as well, but we would, um, take into that consideration that it, it's, it's really. Difficult from a feasibility standpoint to have the same judges in all three of those regions. Um, I think, look at it and, and where we go, um, our, our limitations, um, I think I shared last meeting, current UK limits are allowing. Um, 65 spectators and 100 on deck. That didn't even take into account the staffing, um, in a talk with our, our manager and he said we need roughly 14 officials. Then you've got approximately 18 of our staff, that doesn't count UK staff and all of those count toward the overall limit that's in the building. So you've got 225 that you could have in the building and we, we would already be, uh, cutting into that and that's not even coaches included on that as well. And then sharing with you that the data entries, um, this is based upon four names per relay. Um, if you, in 2020 numbers of 24 advanced, we cut it to 24. It would be 205 and 216. And if we went for a full 40, you can see where it was 360 and 325. Um, we still have the currently approved dates of that week of April the 19th. Um, and then, you know, we're looking at the, the trophy cost and other meat costs and involved in executing, um, the postseason.
Butch, one real quick question for you, just, uh, to confirm what I believe you've reported, uh, since we announced the dates of the 5th and the 19th. The majority of the regions are looking at the, the region, the week of the 5th and the state, the week of the 19th. And can you talk a little bit about the normal two-week gap that some of our non-swimming schools may not know about there on the board?
Yeah, they like to have that in between region and state. Traditionally, we did several years ago have it back-to-back. And just for the training, um, and pacing for the, the student athletes, it wasn't, um, it wasn't necessarily what the schools wanted. So we went back to trying to have that two weeks. Um, in between on that for the, the betterment of the students. Some of the other things you got to look at and, and like the board, you charged this last time with is to continue to advance the 40 regional competitors. Um, we talked, uh, briefly at the last meeting about maybe having, um, satellite first rounds or whatever you want to call it of the state. Um, you could do that like we did with the diving and have those paired up. Um, and, and talking with the commissioner, those would be run by, you know, the association, much like the, 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 um, soccer and volleyballs are. If you look at, um, 40 entries per, um, regional event, we could group them into three and it would be the top two from each region. Plus the seven at large, and this is, this is a change. Um, but again, it is a one-year change, trying to get, um, the postseason opportunities for the students. Um, and in talking, if we go to these three satellite sites, um, commissioner charged, um, me to make sure and working with some of those. And I've talked to a couple of them, two of the three, um, and the, the manager of the third one is on board with it, but. To make sure that it could be live streamed and it would be obviously, uh, some form of, uh, pay-per-view through the network to help us recoup. Um, the, the finances in, in renting these facilities and the trophies as we shared with you in that cost in earlier slide.
And, and Butch, am I correct? This part is part of the recommendation. There's a decision point coming, but this is actually part of the overall.
Yes. So there, there's a couple of alternatives, um, that we've talked about, um, and, and the state champion. We would use the semi-state results to score the state awards. In other words, your regional competitors would advance to those semi-states. We would swim. And from those times, then we would score points and award the state awards. Um, it would, wouldn't be any, uh, coming to Lexington or wherever for a state, uh, event on that. Um, you could change the calendar, um, and require that that first week be April the 5th. And then allow those two weeks that in between the region and the semi-state round. And have that semi-state round the week of the 19th that would have been the, the state, um, event. Um, and then the, another alternative, um, would be only the individuals, the top 16 would advance to a state round level. Um, with regard to, um, the consolation and championships, because you score 16, uh, places at the state. And we, we would have, uh, two heats on that. Still, uh, I know the commissioner's been in talking with the University of Kentucky. We shared with the board previously that. Even Northern Kentucky Silver Lake was interested or willing to consider hosting. I, I should put it that way. Um, but we still run into the deck space and, you know, we've not even counted the first coach in there to be able to be as well. Commissioner, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that.
Well, I think in summary, the biggest thing is that, that despite everybody's efforts, including all our facilities all through the state. Uh, there's not an opportunity to try to create swimming like it normally is. Um, there are smaller facilities that could potentially get some athletes, but even. A meet that only brings in 16 in each event per gender is going to be above the limits of almost every facility in the state. Uh, and, and it's unfortunate result of the pandemic. It's the one that we've not been able to. To have a workable solution and we are not the only state. We have several states that have actually canceled their swimming. And a majority of states are doing some kind of modification for one year. Uh, we hope that next year we've got hundreds of people hanging on each other at UK again, but right, or, and any other facility, but right now. Uh, it does not appear to be feasible to have any event that has fans, uh, for postseason. Us for the championship to try to create a culminating event, um, would, would, would necessarily mean less kids get to come. Um, we got a much different result when we started looking at how we could bracket wrestling, but. What we tried to do was stick to the 40 advancers from the region, which was the board charge. Look at every alternative for fan attendance, which we have. And then try to figure out a way that we can also accommodate the schedules. The other problem that we have, you know, the fifth, which is the proposed week of the regions. Um, was announced, there's only a handful of districts that are having a spring break. The week of the 12th, of the minimal feedback we did receive, um, from the last announcement, the, uh, there was quite a few that mentioned. The 12th as a, uh, as a, since 126 of our districts are on spring break, be sure and leave that alone for pacing and or. Uh, break. We did get quite a bit of feedback on that. We know the 19th. Uh, is, is the state current week and going much later than that, you're starting to get into significant conflicts with spring sports that you all do not want. Uh, and we do have a lot of conflicts. Swimming is just a, a, it is a challenge, but we've come up with a workable alternative. We think that alternative one. Lets everybody that qualifies have a meet beyond the state. There's just not one meet where all 200 of them get together. As Butch said, even if you mathematically look at 16 competitors and limiting the relay cards. You, you don't really have any room for coaches in any facility we have. So it is, um, just, it is a pandemic consequence and, and we want to have the event for the students. So that's why we believe alternative one is the, is the best alternative. It still allows us to award trophies. We'll, yes, we will take on quite a bit of expense getting trophies and medals out to people. But they will have a culminating event, which was your charge to us. Butch, anything I left out? You might want to mention one thing. We have had a sporadic, a couple of bits of feedback about just go to the region and stop. But we did not at all feel like that's anything you wanted to consider. Just the total elimination of an advancing meet.
Yes, we, we, like I mentioned, we, we had responses all over the board and we had responses that. Would match alternative one and we had some that said, just score, let us swim at region be done. I think the overwhelming ones that I've talked to, a lot of them are just, we just tell us what to do. We, we just, we want to know.
Yeah, I don't think it's something we can say, we're going to wait and get closer to March and make the call. I think there's, that's the, that's the number one bit of feedback is just tell us.
So Butch, quick question. If we, uh, if we go with alternative one, does that do both, both deals? We, we get all the kids in that we wanted and we do have the opportunity for a couple of parents to, to come in all three of the different venues you, you've looked at?
At, at this time, I don't see an, an alternative where there could be parents in the stands and that, with the current limitations and bringing the number of kids that we are.
It's kind of a choice which one, Mark, and we prioritized, and I believe it might've been your comment, kids first, then can we get parents? But we did not want to cut the opportunities for students.
Okay. Thank you.
So alternative one allows us to bring as many kids as we can bring to the regionals. And then, and then, and then take it and score it for there for state, mail state rewards out. Alternative two would be have our regional tournaments, bring a select group to the state tournament. Still find a location if possible and have a state tournament from there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll target you to the biggest difference, Daryl, as you just said, the biggest difference is there would be a culminating event beyond the semi-state. Either one of these has the semi-state. The difference is alternative two tries to bring kids together and let them swim again.
And, and I think alternative two, I'd like to add, would then have them competing three consecutive weekends. You would have region, then the semi-state, then the state.
Is there, uh, I know, is there any way in the world that we can, that we can, uh. Create maybe a smaller semi-state? Well, I, I know, I know venues are really a problem, but I, I really struggle with no parents ever, you know, being, being at a state event. Uh, I still struggle with that. I know, I mean, of course I support, you know, getting the kids in there. So that's all we can do. That's all we can do and they can watch it live stream, but. You know, is there, is there any way to spread it out even more where we can allow parents?
I, I, I think even if the regional model, then if you're spreading it out even more than your regional models and looks right now, you're not even going to be able to have parents at the region level as well. If you want to keep the same number of kids that have been coming, if we can limit it. Um, and cut down the number of kids, but I still, when it takes 50 people to execute it, and that doesn't even count coaches and you can only have 150 on deck. You're talking, you're talking about really limiting the, 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 um, entries.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Butch. I think we need to have as many kids as we can involved. Um, I'm just, you know, it's just hard to think that, you know, the parents can't be there for the kids, but I, I totally get it. I mean, it's COVID. I wonder with this positivity rate down to nearly five now, if, if there would be in consideration to, uh, upping the amount of people we can put in, in the stands anyway.
Well, I think that, I like, Mark, that's a good point because I was going to mention that one of the things that we know as of, you know, February the 17th, what the spectator parameters are. We, we need to, we need to submit the competitor parameters. And then we may get some additional allowance for spectators as we get closer. But we probably need to submit how we're going to manage the postseason and right now the answer is no spectators and that could change. I don't think today we need, we need to, to be put in, cast in stone exactly how many people you're going to let in that you're, you're exactly right. That could change.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Chad, do you want to clarify something, uh, regarding what we need to do with these till we can keep moving, look quicker?
Yeah, he, he, uh, he reached out.
Okay, great.
If we have no objection, we'll just move this, um, to the foreboard meeting. All right. All right, next item, three point four, winner wrestling.
You've, you've got some recommendations here. Mike and, uh, Michael will interject as needed, but. Wrestling, we have found a way and, and I'll go back to something that came up in swimming. One of the nice things about wrestling is it has a symmetrical alignment. You have eight. Uh, regions and therefore you can pair people up and do a little bit, little bit easier than you can when you're dealing with nine regions spreading out through the whole state. But, uh, right now we've had nothing that we're aware of, uh, regarding regional, other than normal procedures. I mean, obviously the dates are different. Um, but we do still recommend that, uh, especially now, we recommend they, they get away from the, the long. In-person seating meetings and just use the automated seating. It's now possible through Track Wrestling, which was recently bought by Flow Sports. Uh, and then Mike, if you want to go over some of the different things we have talked about with the state format and potential site.
Yes, sir. Um, again, the parameter, trying to, uh. Guarantee that we advance the same number of students that we always have been. And as the commissioner said, we have eight regions. So if we qualify four from each region per weight class. Uh, we're talking about advancing 448 wrestlers, not counting the coaches and workers and so forth. What we could do with this, uh, which would possibly lower the number of wrestlers at one venue at a time. Is break up the state championship into, let's say, sessions. And you have session one or semi-state one, which is on one weekend and then session two on the next weekend. We would therefore cut the number from 448 wrestlers down to 112 at any given location. This would also, um, cut back on the number of coaches and so forth, which, uh, would allow, we believe, um. Of, of course, we, I can't guarantee that at this time, but we would give opportunities to parents to be there and, and witness their student athlete competing. Um, as the commissioner mentioned, uh, this is one tournament, but it's just different sessions. So points and advancement, uh, would come from the four semi-state areas to a culminating event. Um, we would have a situation where, um, the team points that are normally acquired through each individual match, uh, would. Also move forward to the culminating event. Uh, we would give every wrestler that we have in the past an opportunity to wrestle at the state. Um, but we would only have a, a ceiling therefore of 112 at any one of our given locations.
Let me interject something, Mike, that was on his first slide. Basically wanted to be sure that you understood as a board. There are a couple of venues that have reached out and people that have reached out for, on behalf of venues. That are in the far west or far east part of our state that have, uh, talked about potentially holding state, holding up the full house state. And it just doesn't seem feasible. It's not feasible with all the attendance restrictions that are out there, particularly not feasible in those travel extremes because. Uh, there's so much existing bus guidance and recommendations about not traveling in large groups and multiple buses, et cetera. We really don't think there's a viable alternative to try to have our current format. And that's why we moved to the, the opportunity for semi-states, um, which we think opens up an opportunity to go forward. Anything that you want to mention, Mike, on the format? Because one of the things we've tried to do is do. Anything that you want to mention, Mike, on the format? Cause one of the things we've tried to do is do the full wrestle back. Um, there are a number of states that don't do that. What that means for the non-wrestling people is, uh, it's a full consolation bracket where you wrestle every position. Uh, everyone has to lose twice. Uh, and so it is, uh, we've tried to preserve that opportunity at your direction from January.
Yes.
One of the things the semi-states would do is allow us to fully wrestle those to consolation brackets. And we, our, our recommendation involves, we would seed those using the track wrestling parameters. Uh, and that way we don't have to have an in-person meeting where every, you know, for a three straight week period, somebody's got to have a seeding discussion. Then we would, obviously we have to take on the cost of those semi-states, but there would be, there would be some revenue for ticketing as well as there's likely to be streaming available of all of those as well. And then Mike, the state recommendations?
Yes, um, the top two from each of those semi-states would move forward. Um, just as in a traditional two-day tournament that we've had in the past, uh, the wrestlers that make it to the next day, um, after so many bouts, uh, come into what we call medal consideration. So all eight of these wrestlers from the four semi-states per weight class would automatically be medalists. Um, and then we would come to one event, uh, a day-long, uh, tournament, if you will, which in, um, each wrestler would again have, uh, two opportunities to move forward. Um, and we could therefore crown the same number of, uh, champions and competitors as we have in the past. Yet again, this event would limit 112 wrestlers and, um, increase the opportunity for more, uh, spectators.
Yeah, different than our swimming. We do have, if we reduce the field in this way, we do think there's a way to, uh, allow the spectators in. To a greater extent, at least families, if not. So that's where we set with wrestling. Mike, any editorial you want to add?
No, sir. Uh, many of the coaches have reached out to us. Uh, I've spent the lion's share of my time between the last board meeting and today, uh, talking with, uh, the, you know, the different coaches and, um, the athletic directors. All of the region sites are on board with moving the date that we originally had set. Um, and most of the coaches were the ones that brought some of these, uh, concerns, uh, and ideas to us. Uh, especially considering the fact that many of them have found it a hardship this year to, um, gain any, uh, finances to govern their uh, expenses that they normally incur in a regular season. Um, with us cutting back on the travel and the overnight stay, uh, they find this is a plus.
Yeah, we've been really surprised by the, the near consensus of, of feedback. There, there have been people that feel a little differently and some of those, thank you all for sharing those. Some of those isolated cases have also communicated with us. But the vast majority of the region reps that Mike has spent a lot of time talking to, as well as other members of the coach association seem to agree that for this year and this year only, this is an alternative that lets both of your objectives be met. The same number of people advance, but have fans in attendance. So I, I don't know, Marlon, if there's any questions, but I think we've, that's kind of what we've been able to glean from wrestling to get to you.
Any more discussion on this? Any questions? If not, well, uh, if we have no objections, we'll move that report to the full board meeting. Next item on the list, uh, item 3.6, uh, esports championship status.
I'll ask Joe and Rob if they have anything to interject. This is the adopted standard schedule that Play Versus, which is our contract company produces. And Joe, I don't know if there's any additional commentary. I know you have regular communication going out to the school.
Uh, no, you know, we're currently in the process of getting everybody registered. We're looking to have good participation this year, probably more than we did in the fall. Uh, it's just tough to ask schools to take on a new opportunity because of COVID this year. Uh, Rob and I have been trying to get over to UK for the last two weeks. And weather is unfortunately sidetracked that, but we'll get over there soon and take a look at their new facility and hopefully we can lock that in for our spring championship.
And I believe that, um, the, the dates you have here, the 13th through 21st are flexible dates from Play Versus for the state. And we will be able to control the date through the facility talks. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Questions from anyone?
No other questions. We'll move that report to the, um, full board meeting. Next is, I see basketball. Um, well, 3.7. Oh, my thing has got winter dance, Julian.
Well, the dance and cheer, we're just going to let you know, we have solicited, uh, multiple times, uh, declarations. We have heard both cheer and dance. We've got declaration totals. They were due in Friday, but with weather, I think they were due in Monday. But with the weather, we certainly are not going to rigidly apply those deadlines. We'll give them at least this week to get those in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Basketball, I'm sorry.
You're okay, because I will, we'll just cover this because it won't take me a second. Sarah, do you want to remind the board? Um, number of squads that have declared, it was in 140 ranges, I remember, the cheer. And we don't need the exact number. You can just stay in the ballpark.
About right. Um, last time I checked, um, we have 137 right now.
Right.
That, that have answered.
The, the interesting thing is in talking to representatives of KPOS this past weekend and other people, we also have been told there's a number that have declared, but have no intention on competing. They kind of hedge their bet by declaring, because many of them have not even had an opportunity to practice routines and really get things going. So it, that will be an at most number in terms of, of declarations. So we will formulate a regional plan and get that out to you. We still will try to have regional competitions. We have a number of regions with very few declarations. Same thing for dance, your total, Mike, on squads.
Uh, we had about 78, um, and some of them competing in two divisions. So I would, I would round that off to roughly 80.
Okay. And what that, you know, we know that's down, but we also know that for so much of the year, the schools were not allowing them to practice. And, and both cheer and dance, despite the fact that dance is really about our two and a half minute routines, cheer and dance being restricted from attending game has games has really slowed down their organization and their ability to get together and do things. So, uh, there's a number of our districts that still are not allowing cheerleaders on the sidelines. And so it has impacted it, but we are moving forward with the original dates and both Sarah and Mike will be working on their, their plans going forward. If you move that one, Marlon, then we'll, unless there's objection, you know, get basketball real quick.
All right. If no objection, then we'll move those. Next up is, uh, basketball, winner championship.
Just information for you, um, the, the ticket interest survey, uh, about 60% of our boys ticket holders still want to order this year. Everybody wants to be left on the list. Uh, they are all ordering a little less. Uh, but we, we will, it does look like that even with our reduced capacity, we're going to be able to get people in the building. No one, likely no one will be sitting in the same seat they were in a year ago or will be in in 2022. But we do have a significant portion that we're going to be able to get in the building. Percentage of our ticket holders were a little less on the girls. We're pleased with the devotion and the, and the support that our fans are giving it. I will start meeting with the box office next week. Uh, looking at prioritizing people, obviously our corporate contracts or written agreements that, that we've got to fulfill. You're all, uh, few seats, um, seats, uh, for other, we, we're not doing very many comp tickets. Uh, yeah, I told you all that in January, even some of our former employees will likely be disappointed, but, but, uh, for a year, we just giving something away free doesn't seem very wise. Um, and then we will then navigate down through the list of, of people that have expressed interest. Um, and, and look at where those seats are. As I told you last time, the seats are all set to where there's social distancing to where the, the, the ticket, ticket master system will, will dictate where somebody is. And then here's where the next one goes and here's where the next one goes. And so that priority will be able to be arranged. And yes, if the attendance gets more flexible closer to the event, we will be able to add capacity. We are looking right now at a ticket plan that would definitely ensure full masking all the time and social distancing all the time. So, um, there, there is some room in between 15% and the full building. But I remind the board that the sections that we have had curtained off for the past couple of years, uh, there were expense advantages in that as well, because we didn't have to secure those areas as much and they didn't require as much cleaning. Now, uh, uh, the, obviously whatever we do for, for allocating seats will affect the competing teams. Uh, as I told you in January, to reiterate for, for both you and the public, uh, our seating allocations for the reserve seats will directly impact, uh, how many seats we have for the teams, which is why all tickets will be for 15 games. Uh, when we sell a set of tickets, it's no longer for eight sessions. But one of the real advantages to the electronic ticketing that we went to a year ago, if I'm Debbie Beekler or I'm Daryl Billings and I've purchased four tickets, I can assign each of those four tickets to somebody different. And I can send that to them on their phone and they can get in and I don't have to be with them. The, the days of paper tickets are over. Uh, as a matter of fact, Rupp is not having any paper ticket events. So there's a whole lot more flexibility and their box office is outstanding at helping customer service and facilitate that. So, you know, you'll be able, if you have someone or if you're, or someone else out there purchasing tickets has eight tickets and wants to put two to this person and two to this one, they perfectly are able to do that. And, uh, we think that's going to be a, a quite a bit of an advantage. We're working, uh, on having allowances for pep bands. And ironically, we've gotten a little feedback through the music educators group that not everybody's a hundred percent on board because they haven't been able to do it all year. But I think that when it comes downtime to the end of March, they're going to want to have a small group there. We will limit that size. They will buy tickets like they always have. Um, and, and we will try to have some form of, of band and student involvement there. Uh, it may go back to the days that some of you remember where their seats are upstairs and not in the most desirable area, but they will at least be in the building and able to safely perform. Um, cheer allowances, all of this stuff is ongoing for final determination. But we're, we're going to have cheerleaders in the building, but it will not be the usual numbers and they will not be the usual location. Um, as most of you know, the, the university, uh, with their approved plan has the, the, the allocation of cheerleaders in the lower part of the upper deck. Um, that likely would be our allowance. We're trying to see if we can get, how many we can get downstairs and then talk to people about having, would you rather have, the question becomes, would you rather have fewer people but be downstairs in front of your, your cheering section? Or more people and be upstairs? And so it's, that's going to be an interesting discussion. We will continue that conversation. We will without question have media restrictions. Um, we are not going to violate the first amendment, but we will limit, uh, media, uh, people coming in. We've been in constant consultation with other states and have been looking at legal issues, looking at talking to media. I have, uh, tried to reach out and will continue to try to reach out to both our broadcasters and press associations who have been great partners with us over the years. We want the games to be able to be covered, but it's not going to be a case where anybody that applies for credentials gets in this year. Obviously everyone we admit with a press credential, uh, counts against capacity. We'll have to have a set number and, and they will definitely likely be, uh, in remote locations. We discovered last week, some of the seating expansion for media, um, at Rupp Arena allows people to sit in the upper end zone corners. And they've actually added tables for certain games, uh, where the media can work. Uh, it's not the best seat in the house, but in all reality, we're not going to have an interview room. We're going to be streaming the interviews, not going to have hospitality room. So really the need to be right down on the floor is, is not as great. But we're going to do everything we can to balance all of the different needs of the term. Um, up to and including, I noticed, uh, last week that, uh, two of our states that are having championships have been able to work out, uh, for example, free passes to the network to where the people that are writing a story can see the games. They just may not be able to be in the gym. Unfortunately, this virus is still out there. And, uh, as Mr. Evans asked earlier on another topic, hopefully as more data comes in over the next few weeks, we may be able to relax some of those a little bit, but we have to proceed as it is today. One of the big keys to having 15 separate games is the ability for our teams to have a full cheering section. They will have the entirety of the end zone, which could mean seven, eight, nine hundred people, uh, versus having to, to have the 50 that they've added to regular games. If we cut that and go back to sessions, now you just cut that number in half and you also have to worry about cleaning in between games. So, uh, that decision was made a few months ago, as we told you, and it's really working out well. And we're continuing to work out housing issues, uh, with our convention bureau people who do, uh, great work. So I just wanted to update you, uh, all those people that had filled out survey of interest, they'll get a link to order tickets closer to the end of this month. And from there they'll be able to see what their tickets are and do they want to buy them? And we'll be able to keep you informed.
Thanks. We have questions? All right. The next thing, if not, we'll move that forward report. If we have no objections, we'll move it to the full board meeting. If we have any, no discussion. Uh, next item is, uh, item 3.9, um, spring sports.
There's no changes proposed to the spring calendar that you've already approved. Um, spring sports have the start per the dates that were put out after the last meeting. A couple of clarifications. We've had a lot of questions about scrimmages. Uh, at this point, there's no reason for us to prohibit scrimmages among our spring sports teams, uh, the allowable two within ballot 23. So it is our intention to, to allow those for the spring sports this year. Uh, right now we still are not sanctioning NFH events, large events that require, uh, the NFHS approval. Uh, when, when the season segments are defined, which will be the first three weeks, the second two weeks or three weeks, then the final three weeks. There, we hope by the end of segment one that we have some allowances there, but, uh, the sanctioning continues to be restricted. We've had a lot of questions over the past couple of weeks. And I know it came up in last week, so we're going to call about travel guidance. Our travel guidance that we put out for the spring will be very close to the travel guidance that was put out for the, uh, winter. It is not nearly as restrictive as it was for the fall. It places these decisions in local hands with recommendations. Uh, certainly, uh, if teams are planning overnight travel at this point, they need to plan on quarantining when they come back. That's the current, uh, recommendation of state public health. Maybe that changes as the season goes along. But it's a, there, there's a lot of factors, school boards and school districts are going to have to consider before they approve, uh, spring sports travel. And our, our guidelines will, will be very closely aligned with the recently released KDE guidelines on field trips. We're all hopeful it starts to relax, but we don't know. That's what we know about spring sports. Mr. Miller?
All right. If there's no discussion, we'll, uh, no objection, we'll, um, take that report to the full board meeting too. All right. Next item, item four, finance administration, item 4.1, review evaluation timeline. I think Chad's going to take that, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Miller. Uh, this is an annual requirement that we review the evaluation process uh, for the commissioner. Uh, as you can see, uh, the evaluation is set to open on April 15th. We'll close that on the 24th. We'll be using the, uh, tool, uh, Survey Monkey. Uh, it, we also have the questions from, um, past evaluations. We, we haven't had any, uh, call for change on those and that gives us a, uh, an evaluation tool that has some consistency. Uh, so I'll work with the executive, uh, officers to make sure that that is all done on that timeline. And then we'll share that with the executive officer so that they can, uh, review those results, uh, later on in April. And then that'll put you guys in a position to complete the evaluation process in May.
All right. Thanks, Chad. Any discussion on that? All right. If none, uh, next item, item 4.2, president-elect election. This is a time of year where we've got elect a, a president-elect for the following year that will serve and then become the president the following year. So I think if I'm right, Commissioner, we just open it up for anyone to nominate anybody?
If we don't get one. That's not done in a work session. Is that, it's done in an active board meeting, is it?
You can advance the item. You can do it either way because either one has the full, has a quorum of the board and, and this board has done it both ways. You can advance the item and do it during the full meeting or you can consider it now. My correction?
Yeah, I would absolutely agree. We have a quorum here. So any action they take would, uh, meet that requirement.
So when, uh, when I'm here, do we have any objections to doing it at this meeting? As opposed to the full board meeting? If not.
Uh, Mr. President or Mr. President-elect, uh, this is Pete Galloway. I would, uh, this is Pete Galloway. I would like to nominate Kirby Smith for the president-elect position.
I can't, did I hear something else?
I would second that.
We have a second? Does, so do I have anybody? Do I need to say anybody opposed, Julian? Or do we, do we have any other nominations?
There you go. That's what I believe.
Have any other nominations? If none, if I'm hearing none, then all in favor of Kirby Smith becoming the president-elect, signify by raising your hand? Anyone opposed? If I'm hearing none opposed, congratulations, Kirby. You're president-elect starting next year. Would you like to say anything?
I'll just say thank you. That's quite an honor and look forward to serving in this capacity. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. Next item upon the agenda, item 4.3, update on corporate sales agreement.
With you, we have been looking at how to manage our corporate sponsorship sales and we have a tremendous history and our current company is obviously a has been devoted and definitely, I can't say enough good things about Leonell Marketing. We were approached a few months ago about looking at a company that had gotten itself involved with several other states. And so I just want to share with you real quickly a few detail points, but, but starting in the Northeast, this is a North Carolina-based company called TPG. They started in the Northeast. They've expanded contracts throughout the Eastern Seaboard, down into the mid-Atlantic. They're now the marketing firm for the NFHS and its network. They offer a guarantee and a non-guarantee model. We have talked to them only about a guarantee model, the financial security of a guarantee model versus a percentage of sales model and did that really because if we were going to go a percentage sale model, there's probably other people we want to involve. They are the only company doing this at this level with a guarantee model. So that's one of the reasons that we've looked at them. They have been at various session meetings and they certainly have staffs provided them a ton of information as they try to decide if they were interested in us. For the guarantee model, the revenue is guaranteed long-term. It is a 10-year contract so that the association can more readily create a working budget for the year without having to dedicate our staff to the constant monitoring that this requires. The guarantee model presentations, they are longer, they are standard. This is not a carve-out agreement for Kentucky. This is their standard agreement. Likely, the company will be upside down in the first two years of the agreement and then the company itself would start seeing positive revenue the year after that. Meanwhile, we're continuing to get our guarantee. And that is something that no other entity can offer. I know that, that it's often a discussion point in various states about 10 years is a long term. But you have to think about if you have worries about loss potential, if you have worries that maybe in seven years we're doing wonderfully, let's hopefully it gets to the point where it's that way and we're in a revenue share opportunity. The basic structure of the agreement, each year, we, this is covered on some additional detail that you all were sent. But each year, the association, TPG, must agree on a budget of revenue and expenses. We both jointly control the expense side. Neither party has leverage on the expenses. We receive a contracted guarantee each year regardless of sales and a guarantee that has a modest escalation each year. Following the guarantee, they retain those previously approved expenses. And then following expenses, there's an additional small amount of revenue that they retain and that escalates slightly, just like the guarantee escalates slightly. After that, the, any additional is split 50/50 with a provision that escalates to 60/40 in our favor if things go well. And each side has an opt-out for material breach and that does include any issues related to the fact that we might not agree on budget revenue and expenses. It would rework our sponsorship agreements for existing partners to ensure that expenses are properly stated. There was a worry by some people that looked at this material early. And with the same worry that other states had, that somehow these things were going to result in loss leaders for our state, maybe additional hotel costs, additional ticket costs. Those are all factored outside of contract for the sponsors and reimbursed to us. So there is no financial risk for us. Specific agreements they've carved out to remain with us. And those are our lighting agreement. There's, we have lots of trade agreements that we have food and beverage for working with our workers and events as well as we have a couple of auto dealer arrangements that are outstanding with great partners. And they're letting us manage those continually. So they recognize they are very familiar with the state association business. If the board should agree, we would finalize an agreement with them. Sales could begin in the spring for the 21-22 year. There is a financial incentive, a signing bonus to agreement. That financial incentive goes down if we delay, but it's still there. My goal with that financial incentive would be to come back to you in May with consideration of some seed money for the development of a foundation. If anything, the last 12 months have taught us is we have to accelerate the development of a foundation. We've had it technically on the books for a number of years, but just through a variety or for a variety of reasons have not been able to proceed. It has to become a priority. And obviously, receiving a signing bonus helps with that because then we can perhaps seed that foundation. Current marketing would be able to continue through the end of the school year. And then what it would, the change it would make for us is we would have to provide some space that's not compensated by, that's not compensated by us, but we, they would select the individual after consulting with us and there's no other personnel cost. We have several spaces available. So at this point, it is not a relocation of any of our existing staff. We have areas up front where through attrition, we have open work areas. We also have a common work area in the back that our part-time Title IX people, when they come back onboard this summer, use part of that, but there's other spaces available. So we've really honed it down to where we really believe that this is the best thing in good conscience. And if you have the thoughts of the fiduciary responsibility as staff and I think as board members, we cannot walk away from an agreement that offers us at least what we've been doing. And that's a big thing. It is not a reduction and maybe we'll bring you up later. It is, we're going to, we're going to match what you've been doing. So the request and recommendation would authorize staff to finalize the negotiations, sign the agreed-to contract. I can tell you, it's not my mode of business to do that without including at least the executive committee in a review. And I know good and well, our general counsel will need to review it in depth. So we're ready to move on this and move into the next phase of corporate fundraising to secure the funding of the association, which is in peril at best right now due to the loss of basketball revenue last year and the likely revenue loss in restricted attendance this year and no guarantees of any further assistance coming along. So I think it's, it's good timing for us and a good opportunity. And before we take any questions, I'd ask Mr. Coke, who was having some connectivity issues earlier, but is there anything that that did not mention that you feel like is significant that we need to mention?
No, sir. Nothing on this one.
Okay. So, Mr. Miller, that's the recommendation going forward.
Commissioner, we need to, we need to go ahead and sign this contract if I'm understanding you correctly by April 1. Is that correct?
We have to have an agreement by March 1, signature by April 1 for the guarantee and the incentive payment to stay the same.
So we have to have an agreement by March 1 and then a signed contract by April 1?
Yes, sir. I think the, there is reference in the discussions for April 1 and that is that they want to have someone onboard actually selling for 21-22 by the first of April. Am I correct, Butch? That was the timing. So that's why they're trying to focus this. They would use the month of March to try to find the person while we are looking over the commas and the underlines in the contract.
How quick are they going to have us a contract or do we have a contract?
We do not have one at this point. We have talked about it significantly. They've not given us a written one because they didn't have authorization for me to ask them for one. That's what today's action is about.
All right. Do we have any other discussion or questions about, about disagreement? If none, then I think if we don't have any objections, I'm going to, we're going to move this to the full board meeting this afternoon. All right. Moving on. Next item, item five, member school administrative issues. Item 5.1, report trial windows for activities shifted as part of the calendar.
We've had several questions and I've talked to staff quite a bit. Notice that you all put in as a board policy, a two-week trial window for the activities, only the activities. Those windows, in case you get questions, those windows will be start the Monday following the championship in each of the activities, just so you get those questions. I know cheer and dance, that's always a big issue of timing. But as soon as everyone's done with state championship for this year, we roll into tryouts for next year and they can start getting ready for their summer activities.
All right. Do we need to move that or is it just update?
I think it's, you've got it in the public meeting. I think you're okay to just, it was reported during the work session. Chad, unless you disagree, there's no board action necessary.
All right. I would agree.
Thanks, Julian. All right. Next item, 5.2, status of prime date monitoring.
Ms. Rodenbaugh, you want to quickly give the board what you found out? I know that you've got a memo in there to them, but just a quick summary.
Yeah. As you recall, you did, we did continue to monitor the prime date requirement for girls' basketball for this season. Last fall, you guys did decide to waive the penalties for the 2021 season, but we still want to, wanted to go through and do the checks. And we will notify schools that are out of compliance the final week of the regular season just to ensure that they are planning for next year to still be in line with the requirement for the following season. A lot of contracts or schedules are two years. And so we want to be sure that the ones that are out of compliance are aware so that they can correct it before next season. We currently have right around 70 schools who are out of compliance. And I know that with weather and everything else going on, there have been lots of changes. But we will notify those schools who are still out of compliance the last week of the regular season so that they can plan accordingly to meet that requirement next year. Any questions?
Thanks, sir. Any questions about prime date monitoring? If not, I'll just accept that report and we'll move on to the next one. I know you said something about item six. We don't, we're not going to discuss item six, right, Julian?
6.1, if we could, we'll give you a quick review. And then 6.2 and 3, at your all's request, we're deferring to the next meeting.
All right. So item 6.1, legislative and legislation review.
Just real quickly, we are always impacted by the legislature, but, but not necessarily always directly. We do have several pieces of legislation that could potentially involve us. The most high-profile one, of course, is Senate Bill 128 and I believe its companion is House Bill 369. There are versions that would allow for a, an additional year during the 21-22 school year academically and then subsequently athletically. Our previous discussions with proposal authors protected the age restriction. Remind you that, that we are, we already have between six and seven years range between our oldest and youngest competitor, particularly in light of students who may have been held back earlier in school. And that would, and that's all that, that protection of seventh and eighth grade participation is by state law and there's no proposal to amend that. So the addition of an extension of the age rule is likely not a good idea related to the health and safety of student participants and/or travel. And we have made that comment known. We have made that known to the legislature. However, the other issues are really issues that need to philosophically rest with the school administrators on what they want to do with the future years and the extended year. Previous conversations with the, with the sponsors and with other interested members of the General Assembly protected the fact that we would leave the age restriction. Also, we talked about other rules that might, it might be impacted. And I think that they're really looking at it from a perspective of the academic loss of the student. Requiring them to be a full-time student is still there in the original. We also know through the legislative process, there can always be a substitute as the bill moves along and we will keep our eye on both of those. Chad, is there anything else on 128, Senate Bill 128 or House Bill 369?
No, on those two, I think you've dealt with those, all the deal points on that.
Okay. We also are tracking House Bill 69 or, yeah, 69?
89.
89. Thank you. That has passed the House, both committee and the full House and is now moving over to the Senate side. If you have Senate contacts that you want to contact and support this bill, this is a tremendous bill for our schools going forward as it adds a misdemeanor offense to the intimidation statutes related to officials. You remember from our survey a couple of years ago, the number one reason people are getting out of officiating is that the way they're treated by fans and the way they're followed to games and we've just got to stop that. There's absolutely no excuse for a parent saying, I'll meet you in the parking lot, following them to a car, hollering at them in the locker room. There's no excuse, zero. I don't care how good the player is or how bad the official is. It cannot be forgiven. And this at least would give law enforcement another tool in their toolbox. We've heard people objecting because this is a carve-out for officials. And I would remind everyone, there's already a carve-out for officials with our assault statute. This just adds another provision. But if we don't do something to recruit officials, we're going to end up starting getting games canceled because we don't have enough. So that's a big one for us. Chad, you have a couple of others that could at least be tangentially related to the association. I know you've been briefing us on.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. And then when it comes to the issues in the legislature, I kind of help track those with the commissioner. Commissioner takes the lead on those, but, but I certainly help him out as time permits. There are a couple of additional pieces of legislation we're tracking. You know, we're tracking upwards of 20 right now, but the most significant ones that might have some impact is, is the COVID liability bills. There's a, there's a version in the House and the Senate that are both moving their way through right now. House Bill 10 from Representative Sheldon has passed the House floor and is on its way to the Senate where the Senate version, Senate Bill 5 by Senator Stivers is in committee right now. That might have some impact on us because it'll give either particular immunity to organizations like us or give us a defense to any type of litigation that may arise due to COVID. You will recall this year, earlier in the year, we worked with our broker to get some, some coverage in place in terms of insurance that would help provide some, some coverage in the event that we had any type of litigation. We're very forward-thinking with that and actually have insurance coverage that a majority of our state associations across the country do not. So we're in a really good position, but we're keeping an eye on that legislation. There's also some legislation on vouchers, both in the House and the Senate, but there's not been much motion on those and what real impact they would have on the Kentucky High School Athletic Association is, is not clear at this point. And I don't think that there would be. There's a Senate Bill 106 that deals with the Save Women's Sports Act. It's stuck in committee, hasn't come out. One, one other Senate bill deals with asthma inhalers that has actually passed through committee and is on the consent agenda for the Senate. And this piece of legislation requires consideration and recommends that every school have asthma inhalers in at least two locations in the school, including the athletic office. It won't make them mandatory, won't make them required, but it will encourage people to do that. And obviously, when the legislature encourages something, you know, that, that's probably best for our school districts to take a look at that and consider that. That's really all the, the major pieces that would potentially impact the legislature. But we continue to review it on a daily basis and make sure we know what's going on. The legislature is out for this week. So the deadline to file bills was pushed forward to, I believe it's the 25th or 23rd of next week. So we should have some finalization on if there is any pending legislation that's been filed next week. And we'll certainly keep everybody apprised of any developments. Commissioner? And we'll certainly keep everybody apprised of any developments. Commissioner?
I have nothing additional.
Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Chad and Commissioner for that update. Next item on the agenda is reports and information. Are we going to move these to the full board meeting? Julian, are we going to talk about them now?
That would be preference.
What to move them?
Let's take seven, seven to the full board meeting.
All right, all right, we'll just take seven to the full board meeting. And I think that if we do that, doesn't that wrap up our work session?
Well, I have, sir, unless you all have something.
All right, do we have anything else before we make a motion to adjourn the work session? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
I'll make that motion.
Greg, do we have a second? Matt, thank you. If all fall in favor of adjourned the work session, raise your hand.